Sorry.
In the center part?
Just in the wild.
In the center part of the cottages?
Yeah.
alcohol. It's done two foundations in that center part.
You ready to go up there?
Okay, I'm gonna call to order the meeting of the Bath Township Planning Commission. It's April twenty fifth, two thousand twenty three. We have an agenda in front of us. Are there any additions, amendments to the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda. Second.
Support, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And the agenda is approved. Any conflicts of interest to declare tonight? Not hearing any, seeing any, we'll move on. We have no public tonight, so let's go right to minutes. So we have the minutes of April eleventh, two thousand twenty three to approve. Comments or questions about those minutes?
No, well, I one comment. Street names should be capitalized. I've noticed several places in here they're not. Other than that, I had no comment. I move your approval.
Okay. We have support. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Approve that. So communications, Miles, any at this time?
Not this time.
Okay, we don't have any old business, so we're right at new business. And the first discussion item here is the launch of the capital improvement plan for two thousand twenty three.
Okay.
Yeah, please, thank you.
Yeah, so in coordination with the Office of Administration, we wanted to go ahead and announce today that we are kicking off the two thousand twenty three Capital Improvement Plan. You can see on the screen, this was included in the packet and the information we sent out to the public, the projected timeline for this process. Application should go live on the website first thing tomorrow morning, if they're not already live on the website. I just want to remind everyone that we did take a vote and make a slight change for this by taking the vote and made a slight change last year that applicants will now have to have the support of a department head or a majority vote of a committee, commission, or board for any projects that are submitted.
That was an or?
Yep, or.
Okay, at my understanding, they had to have the approval of a department.
Yeah, it was a department. And I, and that was one thing I wanted to talk to Taylor about, because I didn't put this together last week, because we had two different conferences we went to last week. But I didn't see the commission, committee, or board including this information.
It is, it is in there. It disturbed me a little bit, because I thought, my position is, a department, a township department needs to support every CIP project.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be something that's just out there because some committee's out there says, yeah, I'd like to put this in, because then you got no, no department supporting it. Who's gonna, who's gonna, you know, be in charge of the project?
I remember talking about that a little bit last year, and that was kind of the middle ground, because we didn't want to go from a hard change of, because before it was anybody in the public could do it. And we didn't want to go from that to just like only staff. So that was kind of the avenue to create some middle ground there. Again, though, to your point, there wouldn't be a champion, but we felt like if, you know, whatever, most, well, every commission, committee, or board has a staff representative that's assigned to those. So if they were to by majority vote, take on a project, then there would, in theory, at least be a staff person that would be able to see that project through.
I like the compromise. I mean, I think you gotta empower these committees somehow, right? Otherwise, they're, they're, they're not, they're feeling like they're not doing anything, right? I mean, this is one way to think that, hey, we can actually move the needle on some things here.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that was a conversation last year, so we, we thought that was good. But yeah, so I guess if there was any questions, let me know. I know last year, as some projects were coming, the planning commission was a little, it seemed frustrated that, you know, some of the supporting materials that you would like to see. So maybe this year, Dan, one thing I could do is as these projects kind of roll in with their applications, maybe I could even send it to you, and you could pull in, give it a preliminary look and just say, okay, I'd like to see this and that. I could communicate with the applicants. What do you think about that? I'm just trying to think of ways to solve that.
Yeah, so one thing I had a comment, so the, the document that's in our packet here, is that entire document given out as the application packet? Or is it, is some of this just for us?
No, I believe this is our documents.
The whole thing, the timeline and everything?
Yep.
I mean, I do think that it would help, because you have these prompts about, you know, the criteria that we're using, these whatever, how many are, eight questions or so? Eight, right?
Yeah.
I think we should just create a space for them to respond to that, like we're doing to the other elements, right? About, you know, when you go down below, right? It's basically kind of like a survey.
Yeah, that's easy to do.
And those are the things that we're typically missing, right? So if they're just buzzing through the preamble, and they're getting to the stuff to fill out, they're, they're maybe missing that stuff.
Which I'm sure many people would do.
Exactly, yeah. We have a public. There's a, there's an agenda right up here if you want one. And I think, yeah, it's just pretty straightforward, right? Just to put those questions, I mean, maybe, maybe prompt it in the same way that you do above. These are the criteria that we use. Please address these to the best of your ability. Give them a little space for each.
And that's kind of the change we made, if you remember, with the ZBA applications when I first got here. It was four questions, just make people speak to it right in the app. And that's, I think, done a lot for the application.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
That's a good point.
I have a question, just about the CIP process. Where does a CIP, we, we grade them, you know, we, all that good stuff. After it's awarded, there's no protocol after that in the township that I know of. Who, who starts the process of, okay,
Well, goes to the board.
let's bring this to fruition? Yeah, and then it's just put in the circular file. And I speak again of my frustration with the only CIP that's been awarded and allocated funds for the Park Lake Trail, Phase One. Absolutely nothing has been done in two years.
That's where a department needs to be pushing that project.
And there's
Every CIP needs a department pushing this project.
money dripping out. What, what department?
I assume in this case here, it would be the Public Works Parks.
What?
Whoever.
Yeah, that's one man, that's Ben Zeeb, but
Well, he's the department head, he's the one that needs to push it.
But he didn't, see, that's, that's where the, that's where the crux is. He didn't put in the CIP. It's not his baby, you know? So maybe that's it, I don't know.
Well, this goes to Ray's point, I think, right? Is that
But I mean
It didn't have the sponsorship it should have, maybe. But I mean, the board ultimately said, yeah, we want to do this. So, I mean, ultimately, that's the, that's the approval you need.
Right.
But you still maybe need a champion, but someone on the board needs to take responsibility and figure out who's gonna actually spearhead it.
Well, I guess, you know, coming from a, a, a business background that I had, industry, the first thing you would do is have a project manager. And he would start, he or she would start throwing things out, okay, we gotta get renderings, we have to get, you know,
Yep.
RFQs, you know, things of that nature, or we've already gotten RFQs even to make the CIP. So those vendors have already been selected. I, I, I guess there's no others, no, no other statement other than WTF. I mean, how do you start the process? And, and who, who is responsible for?
Do we really know that that is, I mean, I'm not convinced that that's the problem, that you don't have a point person. Maybe it is. I mean, is it an allocation problem? I really want to understand this.
I've kind of been watching this for like the last, we'll say conservatively fifteen years. I don't recall a CIP going through to fruition, other than that two thousand thirteen, when Troy put in a CIP for that fifty thousand dollar monies that bought the parcel that goes out to Park Lake Road for the trail. And ironically, it's also about the trail, but
I think we've had several CIP projects go through.
Tell me about one, I just
How we go to the report, right? I mean, but they have
Senior Center.
What's that? Yeah, Senior Center.
The Senior Center, yeah, that's
I mean, they're
I apologize, I didn't remember that one. But I, I hope you understand, I'm, I mean, this is, it's just so dysfunctional.
Well, I guess that's why, you know, I can see a project being started by a committee.
Yeah.
But when they submit that product to us as a CIP submittal, there needs to be a project manager, which should be a department head, or somebody that the department designates to push that project.
What if the department head is busy doing DPW stuff?
Well, they gotta find somebody that's gonna push it through. I mean, if nobody in the township, other than you, is willing to think this is a good project, then it's dead. Just like the
The board voted for it, so
I was gonna say, who are all the other people that voted it through and, and then in turn allocated the funds? And then in turn
Ryan, is that your sense that you need a champion for this thing to get it rolling? Or is it, is it more complicated than that?
Yeah, you're the, yeah, it's true.
Sorry, I don't want to put you on the spot, but
Functionally, the superintendent is our chief project officer for all things. Departments could certainly help move them through, but at the end of the day, she has to move those through. Operationally, things of the township have been hard to be efficient and thorough on since two thousand twenty.
The DY word comes in line. I know, you don't, you don't want to, you know, I understand that, I can do that, see, I'm just an independent.
We are not, as I think you all have felt, functioning on all cylinders.
I mean, so we've had this conversation, though, before, Ray, so it's not, not new. Some frustration that what we do here doesn't mean a whole lot. But, you know, it's, it's our role, too, right? I mean, we don't have the role to approve projects.
That was one of the reasons I
If there's something that you want in the process that we can recommend, like some, we've asked for sometimes feedback, so that it loops back to the planning commission, just in terms of a report or an update on sort of where our recommendations went. We could advise the board or ask the board to do something like that. But we have those people anyway, right? We have Ryan here and we have Miles, and so they know what's going on.
Well, I mean, it's just like an abyss. I mean, we never get any feedback. Like, two years ago, the board tasked the superintendent with looking at a parcel, adjoining the Park Lake Road parcel, to possibly buy it in furtherance of this Park Lake Preserve and Trail project. And there was an environmental study to the tune of about eight thousand dollars done, and that was taken out of the CIP funds. And yet, unless I'm wrong, there's never been any feedback from the administration side of this township as to whatever happened. I, on my own, I just did research and found that the parcel's been sold to a private party. Ergo, I can assume that we didn't buy it. But that's the only, that's the only feedback I've gotten, and it's been my
Have you been to the board with these concerns?
I have.
And what is the response from the board?
Looking into the camera, it's called deer in the headlights. Pardon me.
Some of what you're asking of us has been shared with us in closed session.
I don't care about that, you know why? Because
I know you don't care, but it It makes it harder for us to say like, here's the deal, Ray. So I hear your frustration. I don't, I don't think you're wrong in your frustration.
Well, and I, and I hear, just by that, I can assume from that feedback that the reason you went into that closed session is so you don't have to put that information out. That's what I hear from those meetings.
Anytime there's a negotiation of property purchase, we go into closed session to just, to empower the superintendent of our negotiating position.
And if, if the property's going to be purchased, then that indeed has to come out and be told to the township.
Yes, so
You know, I argue that
You did not see the board vote to buy the property.
Yeah, so ergo
Yeah, I agree, it should be, there should be a decision come out, either yes or no. And the public should know what the decision is.
I mean, that's what, that's, that's what we're conveying to the public. Is this dysfunctional, half-assed kind of non-procedure?
All right, so I got George wants to
And I apologize, I'm going off track a little bit.
No, no, it's, I mean, these are all important issues. I agree with you that, you know, we don't need to know the rationale necessarily, but we should know the answer.
Well, there should be some rationale, is what I'm arguing.
Well, I'm sure there is a rationale, I would hope so. But at minimum, we need to know yes or no, what's the decision, rather than sort of inferring, like you have, ergo, that the, the township didn't decide to purchase the property.
Going forward, we could request some updates and back, so it doesn't back to us in some way.
It'd be helpful. I mean, we can get that if we ask about it, I'm sure, right?
I think it's wholly appropriate if the planning commission said to the superintendent, you know, we'd like a quarterly update on the CIP projects funded.
That's one way.
And there's, on, on the Board of Trustees' agenda, there is an unfinished business column every meeting. And yet, this unfinished business is never mentioned. Like the, the whole, the, and these all go back to one common denominator, is assigning the superintendent this task.
We haven't seen the superintendent to our meetings in a while, so it might be time for, to invite her back.
Yeah.
I'm sure she'd have no problem.
Yeah.
Well, and, and I have personally talked with people that own Oak Island villages about an easement to make the trail go up that way into, on their property, to keep us from having to pay two million dollars for an elevated walkway. And they were very interested, and Karen said she would take care of that, she wanted to do all of that. And the, I brought that to the board, the board tasked her with looking into that, and there's never been anything done.
Okay, George, do you want to jump in here?
Yeah, just, just if we got updates, and then that would hold, you know, people to, to a standard to keep people informed to a degree. Whether it be, you know,
And I guess
Six months or whatever.
Excuse me. The big, I apologize for interrupting. The, the main thing, I guess, my crux is what I'm getting at, is if a CI, if we are, you know, and we're gonna have more CIPs that we're gonna grade and, and recommend, I argue that if a CIP is awarded and allocated, it should be under unfinished business on the Board of Trustees' docket, and we should get, we as the public should get regular updates on it.
I agree. If the funds have been allocated, that makes sense.
Just, yeah. So that's, that's my, my argument right there.
I don't know how, I mean, their, their agenda, not, not to speak for you, but I know how it goes with you guys, so
Weekly, weekly?
I don't know, but
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's a bunch of projects that are in the works that can't be updated every meeting. I hear what you're saying, and I, I agree with the spirit.
What is the, then, the criteria for being listed under unfinished business?
Usually it's action, you know, as part of the business meeting.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Yeah, that was my, my, just to jump in here, that was my thought, too. I, I guess I also agree with the spirit of what you're saying, just from a staff perspective. But to put an unfinished item on the agenda every time, like, you know, two hundred items on that agenda every time. There's, there are literally that many things in the works at all times.
Yeah.
Well, not that have, have money allocated and voted on, is what I'm saying.
Sewer alone would be twenty items every meeting.
Yeah, oh, heavens, yes, yeah.
That's right.
You could have a separate sewer meeting, I mean, just for sewer.
Yeah.
So let's get back to CIP. We're on CIP.
I'm done.
To the application and the process, I guess.
You were talking about the, is that, the, oh, no, he's, he's taking it down.
Is this the, were you, they had the lines under? Yeah, exactly, yeah, just a, a spot for people to respond to those prompts.
Yeah, I think that would be really useful.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, it's a great idea. Yeah, so these are the questions you're referring to here, okay. And so, yeah, I just wanted to make everyone aware, just going back to what the timeline's gonna be. We've obviously had some interest in some projects this year, so hopefully we'll get some good ones. We'll get us, get them scored using a similar scoring method to what we used last year and the, I believe you guys used it here before. I do like that object, uh, objective scoring method, I think it's a good way. Did sit in on a, a CIP class again earlier this week, just to buff up a little bit before, because I obviously knew this was coming. Put on by Michigan Extension to go over kind of the legal requirements and also the best practices in this process. I actually do think, you know, for some of the stuff that was presented there, Bath doesn't do too bad of a job for how it runs at CIP. Because, and Ray, you might remember this from the class we took. The kind of interesting thing about the legal framework of a CIP is there isn't a tremendous amount of legal framework. Now, when it comes to like a comprehensive plan, every planner knows about the Planning Enabling Act and how it exactly says, this is how you have to do a master plan, this is what you have to do first, second, third. This is when you have to reach out to people with a CIP in the Planning Enabling Act. There is one paragraph that talks about the CIP, so not nearly as much of an infrastructure around it. Now, town, even townships, I, I didn't realize this. Townships are actually optional if they do a CIP. The only reason Bath Township is not optional is because we own a sewer network. If you own any kind of infrastructure network, you have to.
Right, right.
Yeah.
That's in the Planning Enabling Act, right?
Yep, yep.
I had a couple, couple comments. You've got down here, projects which are generally not considered, there's four bullet points. The first three, I have no problem with at all. The fourth one, however, makes it sound like if a project has got funding, it's been allocated and stuff like that, it's not included in the CIP. Is that what that means? Because I think all CIP projects, all products that are over twenty thousand dollars should be in the CIP, whether they get funding or not.
Okay, that's a good point.
You mean, so, yeah, so we're, we're laying out funds to pay for some big project, but they're not requesting funds through this process because they already have them?
All the sewer projects. That's all paid for by the sewer fund, but they should be in the CIP.
No, I agree, yeah. So, but it doesn't necessarily mean they have to come before us.
Oh, no.
But they should be in a CIP report.
They would be kind of the non-discretionary projects that we don't review, but they should be included in the report.
Right.
And they, and I believe all the sewer ones were in the final report that went to the board last year. And I don't know if I ever gave this back, but we actually got some really nice compliments from the board last year on how the thoroughness of that report, so
That's what we need, you need it.
Counted that as a win. I think that's why I can do them, so.
The other comment had, the CIP evaluation criteria, one of I didn't understand. Let me get down to it. CIP, yeah, evaluation, there's what, eight bullet points there? The next to the last one, what are the distributional impacts of the projects? I didn't know what that meant.
Where are we at?
The eight items that we're adding
Yeah.
lines to, second to the last one.
Next to the last one, yeah.
I think that, you know, generally means that we'd be more favorable to something if the benefits, I guess, or cost were distributed evenly over the township community, rather than benefiting or costing a narrow set of the community.
Yeah, the planning work, I think of that as spin-off benefit.
Yeah, I wasn't sure what we tried to do there.
Yeah.
I'm more of an explanation of that, because other developers gonna, or the people who submit the project gonna know what that means, distributional?
Is that like trickle-down?
I can think of a, trickle-down be similar. Planners try to stay away from the word trickle-down. Trickle-down economics. But the spin-off benefit is usually, you know, you put in a big factory, and then the ice cream parlor across the street gets benefit from that, because the workers, you know, have to work, whatever.
Oh, okay, that's what that means, okay.
Yeah, so if you put in a bunch of lighting to help light up a sidewalk, the spin-off benefit is it also creates a sense of place, and then the businesses along that corridor are more business than that.
I mean, I think the, maybe just the easier way to do it are the benefits and costs just distributed broadly across the community. You know, something like that.
The other comment I had was requirements or proposal considerations. When I read that, it, there was nothing here about maintenance costs. And then you go down to the application, and the application actually has listed in there estimated annual maintenance cost. And I think we gotta put that up in the requirements, too, because if we don't put it in the requirements, they'll say, well, it's not required, I don't have to put it in here, but I think we need that number.
Yeah, we write this one down.
So that should be a required response, not just if you feel like it.
Running my mouth, would you repeat that, Ray, real quick?
What's that?
I was running my mouth, would you repeat that real quick for me?
Oh, estimated annual maintenance costs for a CIP project? It's not required where we got the required elements, but in the form itself, it does say estimated annual maintenance cost. Looking for a number, but we need to say that's a required number, you gotta, you gotta put that number in there.
So that would be, that would be projected after the project's completed?
After the project's completed, what's it gonna cost us annually to maintain this project?
Interesting.
That's super important.
Well, it does say that all information on the application is complete as a requirement.
You, you wouldn't really know, though, would you?
You better know.
Well, I mean, what if there's a roof on a, on a pavilion? You know, you're not gonna have to replace that roof for at least ten or fifteen years. So at what point in time would you put those maintenance costs in there?
Well, I think that, that might be another CIP project, depending on the size of the roof.
Well, I know.
I think, I think we're really talking about annual, annual expenses.
Oh, okay.
I mean, an example that I can think of, when they built the Oakmans High School, the new Oakmans High School, they didn't take that in consideration. All of a sudden, they got this new high school and no funds to maintain it.
Oh.
Operate it.
Wow.
I don't know how they took care of that problem, but that's what I've heard anyway.
Two of my grandsons go to this.
Am I looking at the right spot, Miles, for this section about what's required? Because, you know, if you, just add that, it seems incongruous with all the other information that we don't explicitly note, right? I mean, there's a whole bunch of things that is not on that list. To me, it's just the first one covers everything. You gotta complete the application completely, and that includes everything that we're asking for in the actual, you know, fill-in-the-blank part.
Yeah. I mean, you can make an argument either way. I, I agree with what you're saying, I agree, though, that, you know, Ray is saying this is a really important point of trying to evaluate these projects. So if you wanna, I guess I'm seeing one adding that one item, but
Well, I mean,
We can't add all
Someone might infer that, oh, they're, they're isolating that one, so I don't have to give them total cost, I don't have to give them a cost estimate, I don't have to give them the source of funding, I don't have to give them the department's support, any of the things on the application, which we're not pointing out in, in the same way. Why, why would we do that?
I agree, and there, sometimes there's value in simplicity, too.
Yeah, no, I agree, it's just that anybody's been on the board as long, when I've been on, that's the point I've brought up every time we talk about CIPs.
I think we just, just to fix that, we just, we're, we're a little bit more strict, right? If they don't have the application complete, meaning everything's in there,
Yeah.
it gets kicked back to them.
Yep, okay, that's fine.
That's why I was thinking about sending the apps to you early on, getting your thoughts on them, and just say, like, hey, I'm, I'm not liking what I'm seeing, get more. Because last year, I remember with Ben, there was two projects where he presented, and then you guys wanted some follow-up information, emailed out the commission on the back end and forwarded that to you guys prior to scoring.
What do you think the capacity of all the departments is to have that type of information?
I mean, now you're asking me about, so I think Bath Township does a lot with a little. And so I think the capacity of the departments is, they're really busy all the time. And so I'll, I also think, you know, taking the time to thoroughly fill out an application isn't something that every department head is always used to either. I mean, my bread and butter's paperwork, but that's not every department in the township, you know?
I don't see much that's burdensome here, right? I mean, if it's around cost, how in the world are you gonna decide whether to allocate CIP funds if we don't have an estimated cost?
No, I agree, I'm not saying
That's the most difficult, but it's the most obvious, too.
I'm not saying it's burdensome, I'm just saying that, you know, for a lot of these things, they're trying to reach out to bidders, they're trying to figure out what estimated costs are, and they're trying to put that information together for you. It's not always something they're thinking about, it's not always their first thought, I guess. But I think that, that can be cleared up by just being a little bit more strict about how we take in these applications. So I feel like that's, I feel like that is the solution. But to the question, yeah, there's only a few people doing a lot of work that usually in most other municipalities have many more people doing that work.
Is, is that a staffing deficit that needs to be addressed?
Well, like I've talked about in the past, Bath Township and all municipalities operate on fiscal budgets that were made two years ago. So last year's fiscal budget was made upon where the township was at the year prior. So what we have to operate with here in two thousand twenty-three is based upon two thousand twenty or two thousand twenty-one numbers. And it's a lot going on in the growing township. I mean, growth is a good problem to have, it's a better problem to have than decline, for sure, because the working communities are declining. So don't want to, definitely don't want that to happen, but it causes, it causes bottlenecks for staff. It causes overload, yeah, for sure.
Aren't most of these cost estimates, though, coming from outside contractors? Or are they all in-house, most of them in-house?
No, they're all outside contractors, but still, that means that a D, a member of DPW has to be sitting in front of a computer trying to figure that all out, while they're supposed to be out there mowing. And so that's
Figuring out the parameters of the, the request?
Emailing the person, saying like, hey, we want to do this, how much you think this would cost us, getting the email back. Anything that, I've no, at least, what I've noticed at Bath Township is anything you assign to somebody in Bath Township, that means you're taking them away from some other project. No one just, no, I, I haven't seen, and maybe I'm, it's my, maybe I'm biased because I am staff, but I never see a staff member that just has like a free hour. I've never seen that. See, most staff members have to skip lunches, have to work late, have to do stuff on the weekends.
As we grow, as a township, I think that needs to be addressed. I mean, there should be an administrative person handling all of that minutia, while the person doing the scheduling for, as you said, mowing or maintenance on a daily basis, maybe they need a work foreman or something.
Yeah.
Below Ben, you know?
Well, for sure, I think it just always comes down to cost.
Well, exactly, and I, that needs to be budgeted. I mean, that's just, that's good business sense to get ahead of that, you know?
Yeah.
Well, partly it could be defining, I mean, I think it's best you had extra bodies, right? But partly defining who has that responsibility.
Yeah.
And right now, it seems a little unclear, I guess it goes to the department head, but maybe that's not the best use of those resources, right? If there's someone else that kind of can coordinate those things a little bit better, I don't know.
I mean, if your bucket's already full.
Someone has to take responsibility, that we know the point person for, to do this kind of work.
Yeah, most, most departments that own Bath Township are one-person departments. I'm very, I'm very lucky, you know, that we do have our proximity to Michigan State, and they happen to have one of the best planning schools in the country, so we get really talented help here in the planning department at low cost of township.
Yeah.
But not all departments can swing, swing it.
No, I know, that's what I'm saying is that, that maybe the department heads is not the best place to look to do that kind of work, right?
But I would absolutely say, like, for my, my purview and my position, I would not be able to churn out as much work as a planning department does if I didn't have the help that we're able to gain from, you know, our interns.
There's this cyclical problem that continues to exist, that staff are unwilling to put a bunch of time to say, like, pitch a new park, right? And do all of the work, which is a ton of work, to figure out what the new park would look like and how much it could cost, to send it up through our process when the board has not indicated they have any interest in doing a park. So it makes it hard for a department of one, or even larger, to say, you know what I'm going to do, I'm going to carve out a bunch of time to do this thing that I believe is right, that I have a big dream of, maybe even the superintendent agrees with me, when it's not even going to get airtime by the board. The board has functionally, and you know, I'll take partial ownership of this myself, failed to do strategic planning to say, we're interested in these things, or here's where we'd like to go. So it leaves the staff in this place where they don't ever want to get out too far, because you've seen, one member of the public doesn't like that they've gotten out too far and comes to the board, and then we act like it's, you know, the conspiracy of a lifetime, and we need to investigate it, who approved, it, it just, so it doesn't pay off for staff to stick their head out, which, you know, as a risk-tolerant person drives me nuts, but I also can't blame them either, right? Especially when right now, we have public and even other board members who are chastising staff and saying they're paying too much and, you know, withholding things from the state police and perjuring themselves in court, I mean, it just doesn't pay off to be like, I know, I'm gonna, I don't really stick my neck out right now. I don't have a solution for that problem, so I hate bringing up a problem without a solution, but that does, you know, as I have been on the board a term before this and now, you know, two years into this term, the number of proposals that have come into the process has just like funneled way down. I mean, we used to have 10, 15 proposals that were in each CIP, and you know, now we're getting like two maybe, and I think it's, you know, partially because of this, the onus is on the staff and the staff, you know, I don't mean to speak for them, but my read of it is, you know, I'm not going to spend a bunch of time to stick my neck out on something that the board has shown zero interest in.
Why not?
Because it doesn't pay off.
I mean, if you believe in something, stick up for it, that's what I'm doing.
I mean, that is, there.
Yeah, but I'm not a staff member.
Yeah, exactly.
There is the advantage though of
Oh, George!
Having people involved that are passionate about a project and sponsorship, right?
Yeah.
So if you're working with a department and the department says, yeah, we'd be interested in that, but we don't have the bandwidth, okay, I'll do what I can, and then you give me approval and we'll send it up through the CIP process.
I've, I've made those offers.
I know you have, and you did it just like I think it should work, kind of, right? Except you didn't maybe have a sponsor, but.
Well, I mean, but I, but literally, I have the professional background to, to take on a task like that, and yet, you know, and I, and I am incorporated, and I can offer my consultant contract if that be the case.
And so part of this is like, you know, you don't want to disincentivize people to be involved, right? And so I don't think we do that, but the process is not quite as accessible as it used to be when you could just submit anything you wanted, right? Which not, wasn't a great model either.
Yeah.
But people have to be encouraged to.
Yeah, because you want something that's realistic.
Yeah, yeah, but you know, but you want people to be involved even though they do need to get sponsorship, right? And so I don't know if we've walked that line really well, but that's one way to get bodies and effort into the process without tasking staff.
Maybe the general optimism of the, of the township, you know, body has waned as, you know, he noticed the, as Ryan noticed, the decline of, of CIPs or even ideas for CIPs. That's, personally, that's my observation.
Well, I think a lot of that's just because of what Ryan is saying, right? It's just, it probably people, not staff, just feel the same way. I know Judy Garding, right? She's so frustrated with CIP, right? Because she's been here how many times, how many proposals?
Why bother?
Exactly, why bother?
Well, I think the bottom, the bottom line is, the township board has the authority and responsibility to approve a project and fund the project. If they're not going to do either one, I can't see why staff would spend any time on it at all. If the project goes through the CIP process, we recommend it, and the board says, we're not funding it, we're not agreeing with this, then why spend any time on it? I mean, that's why you're frustrated, because they did approve part of it, but.
And they funded it.
Yeah, and they funded that part, but they got to, I guess the question really is, if the board is not in favor of something, then it's not going to go anywhere.
Well, I mean, you know, and I, I'm sorry for proudly on this, but CIPs historically haven't, like, like the bathrooms at Cousins Park, I mean, that just, I worked on that personally, Ryan, I think you were on the Parks and Rec Board at that time too, and we worked hard on that, five, six years, and it just went, I mean, it seems to me that, and I can't speak for you, but it seems to me that the board trustees and the superintendent would, would relish the thought of completing a CIP and to say to the, to the township community, say, look, look what we did, look what our process does for you, this is why we're here, and yet, it's just nothing, no answers, no feedback, no updates, no progress.
It sounds like the, you know, a, a meeting should be held, right? Between Planning Commission Board and the superintendent to figure out, because it only, it seems to always come back to the Planning Commission where, you know, the process could be improved, and usually they point to the Planning Commission for some reason about the process, but you know, we do very little in this whole process, right?
Well, if that's the case.
The frustration, I don't think, is with the Planning Commission, because we are diligent in what we do, even though we also are spinning our wheels most of the time, right?
It's the one piece of the tug that is, I would argue, working efficiently and effectively with the material that it is provided with.
Right.
But it would be, I would think, worth a discussion about how, because the, you know, if you're generating apathy, which is probably what you're doing here, that can't be good.
Without question.
So can I say a couple of things, I'll just make sure I'm hearing everything correctly? And when I think about that, let me know if this is incorrect. So one, I do agree that I think it's, again, really useful to have, you know, a department head with the support of the committee, because then you do have a champion. I think it's nice because in all small communities, obviously, we always lean on, you know, the community itself to help us get some of that work done, obviously, Ray, you've offered your services with some of this. I know when I worked for the Genesee County Parks, we had 72 parks in the city of Flint that we maintained, we had a staff of like five people to do that, so we relied heavily on the block clubs and all the boys and girls clubs that were there to get that work done. Without those volunteers, it would not have happened. Similarly, in Bath Township, a lot of the staff relies on their committee members to help them do some of that work pro bono to help this community thrive. So I think that's great. And hopefully, how we tailor this process will incentivize that now, that cooperation. I do agree that, you know, among staff, there could be a feeling of, hey, I am already working 45 hours a week, do I really want to stay after five tonight and try to bust out some research for this if I feel like it's not going to go anywhere? Dan, I was talking to you before the meeting briefly about, you know, this grant that I'm looking at to help supplement a project that's in the works. The only reason I feel at all comfortable to spend time on that when there's so many things going on is because that project has been allotted and funded, which is the Webster Road Corridor improvement.
Yeah.
If that wasn't the case, honestly, I probably would just be like, nah, you know? And it's a grant where I've looked into it a little bit and I realized that we, it's something real. A lot of the grants I've looked into to help supplement this project were either too rural, or were too urban, or were too small, or were too big, or were too white. And so Bath Township for grants, I won't say in my own experience, because I've probably applied for about six to 10 since I've been here, we're in this really weird sweet spot where like, we don't meet anyone's criteria. We even looked at the, we went and sat in on conference of the Office of Rural Development on, at the Michigan Township Association Conference up in Traverse City on Tuesday, and on their map, nowhere in Clayton County is considered rural, which I.
Is not considered rural?
No, no, no community in the whole county, because it's a proximity to Lansing that got us checked out of the box.
So they're like bed, we're a bedroom community is basically what we are.
Yeah, the whole county is a suburb of Lansing in their eyes.
Interesting.
Yeah, so that's what, those are some of the stuff we're up against. About this particular grant, as I was detailing before the meeting, it happened to be none of, none of those factors really applied, so I think it could be something. But once again, it's going to take me probably 10 to 20 hours worth of work to do, you know, that's, that's a big investment for a one-person department. But now on the other flip side of the coin, we're currently in the process of doing our non-motorized transportation plan, we're doing a park, a parks and recreation plan, we're doing those with a professional consultant and marketing those plans towards going after grants. So I know Ben brought, I think it was five CIP projects last year, I think three or four of them got scored by this body, none of them were taken up, they applied through the whole six-year period, so those will get rescored this time, they will get rescored the following year, and then hopefully, after these plans are finished out by the end of, of the beginning of next year, then we'll have some opportunity to get some grants, so hopefully, maybe a year or two years from now, when those projects get rescored, there'll be possibly some grant dollars behind them. Now it's a whole different story at the board level, because now it's kind of like a use it or lose it moment for them, like, hey, we have a grant that's $75,000 match if you approve $75,000 for this project and the project at $150,000 is paid for. So I think that's one element that's been missing, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong from the board, there had, a lot of the projects you're scoring, when the money is supposed to come from somewhere, it's supposed to come from the general fund, and that isn't as appetizing for the board as something that's, you know, 25 or 50% of, they're bringing the dollars to the table. I think that's been a missing element. But again, I've only been here through, this would be my second time through this process, so I can't speak to that over a long-term period of time.
I, I think we, we lack leadership. And again, I, I am part of that, and I am supposed to provide leadership, but I just, I think we, we lack it. We, you know, we just approved half a million dollars more in, in road funding that we didn't budget. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but then a project for like, you know, $50,000 for bathrooms comes up and we're like, oh my God, we couldn't possibly do that, it's so much money. And I watch it happen at the board, the way we respond to, to amounts of money, it varies from meeting to meeting, sometimes 7,000 is a lot, sometimes half a million is not a lot. And I, I, you know, I'll admit my own frustration, it's hard for me to track as well. So, you know, we, we are still sitting on about $1.3 million. We don't have to go after a bunch of grants to do a bunch of this stuff, but I hear what you're saying, that I can watch the, the board and how we respond to like, oh, there's free money that we could go after, let's go after it, let's keep this money over here, you know, until we, we absolutely have to use it. I'm not saying that's not strategic, but there never seems to be like the close of the loop, like, oh, we didn't get that grant, we're sitting on a pile of money back here that we have to use by, you know, 2026, what if we get into the pile and actually use the money for what people want? There just doesn't seem to be that, and this never, it never closes the loop.
Hopefully, that letter that's coming to the board will help spark some of those conversations.
ARPA funds, yeah.
Yeah, and then those ARPA ones, you know, can be matched with grants as well, you know, so look for some low-hanging fruit opportunities there. I know as a planner, I'm always looking, like I said, I've even applied for some grants, and it always sucks to get a denial letter back. I know when I, again, worked at the Genesee County Parks, one of our members of the five-member team was a grant writer, and that's all she did was come in at eight and write grants and leave at five, you know, five days a week, and I, sometimes we got, you know, $100,000 for a trail, and some, one time, we got a pallet of AAA batteries. But we handed those off to the community and they didn't have to pay for batteries that week, and we counted as a win.
Interesting.
So, you know, that's something too, you know, that's something to look into is, I, I think grant writers are, if you get one that's good and experienced, they're worth their weight in gold, you know?
And you could combine that with someone who actually goes out and gets proposals or something too, right? I mean, somewhat similar.
I mean, I shared that email with you too and with the superintendent earlier this week, but Alyssa Slotkin, a congressperson, put out a list of all of the federal requests her office had received from her district, and you know, like, it's Meridian Township, and it, it's not all the big cities, we could have, we could have put something forward, but there's not, you know, there isn't a, a plan to be like, hey, we've been sitting on this thing, like, let's move this thing forward because we haven't done the planning, because, you know, for all the reasons we've just articulated, but it just seemed like, what a missed opportunity, now that earmarks for good and for bad are back in the congressional budget process, we as a community should be asking for these, you know, for us, it'd be large amounts of money, you know, millions of dollars for projects, and whether it's a trail, or whether it's, you know, a pavilion, or whatever it might be, well, we have to be prepared that when the opportunity presents itself, we don't have to scramble to try to get it together, because that's when we don't know maintenance costs and we don't, because we just aren't ready for it. I don't, again, I don't have the solution, but I think we are missing a lot of opportunity.
One thing I'd also like to say is that, I have at least three professional individuals that I know that live in this township that have, have and are professional grant writers. I mean, you are employed by Michigan State University and probably no stranger to grants. And what I guess what I'm trying to say is, is we have professional help out there.
Can I, can I just say then?
Yep.
Hey, I will be going after this one, so reach out, I, I would like help if help is available.
It's not rocket science, right?
Honestly, you probably just have to make the case, which I think is just true, is that a grant writer will pay for themselves quite easily, if they're a good grant writer, right?
Exactly.
That's all you need to say, right? I mean, easily pay for themselves.
I, I, you know, I was a professional grant writer, I do write grants now, I could not agree with you more, but I will draw your attention to the feedback we got for the plans, the non-motorized plan and the Parks and Rec plan, that, you know, I got more comments from the community on that than I have in a lot of things, how could we be paying for this? Can't Miles do this, is Miles incompetent? What, I mean, like, really harsh, awful things for hiring extra help, which is just like, it's like, smart, it's strategic, it is appropriate, it was, you know, an appropriate amount of money, but that's the pushback that the board gets from the community when we do things that we should be doing as a municipality. I have the intestinal fortitude, as you've probably seen at the board meetings, to push back against that. Not every board member feels comfortable, you know? We don't get a lot of feedback about a lot of things, so when four people email us or call us, it feels like, whoa, the whole community is up in arms. And I get why my colleagues can feel that way, but instead of saying like, this is the right thing to do, this is not inappropriate, people, at least in the last year, they, they make everything seem like we're pocketing money, we're stealing, I mean, I'm not, I'm not exaggerating here, these are the things that we're accused of on a bi-weekly basis, you know, winks and nods and, it's, it's garbage, but it paralyzes us from doing the things that are wholly appropriate, wholly legal, wholly ethical, and I would argue incumbent upon why we were elected, but it, we, so these things come up and I can see the other board members like, I don't know about this.
Can I say a couple of things of that too? I, just in my experience working in the Flint area, and I've talked about this before, and then UP here in Bath, there's always a tension, right? There's always a tension between older residents versus newer residents, there's always a tension between the downtown core versus the neighborhoods, or in the case of UP, the new populations moving in to the legacy people that lived there prior.
You're saying tension or attention?
Tension, there's tension between those factors.
Leads to attention.
And, and I think Bath Township is growing, and I think staff internally is professionalizing, we're professionalizing our processes, we're professionalizing how we track and treat and create documents, and I feel like that's change, and people don't like change. I will also say with Williams and Works, I know a lot of planning consultants that are working for Clayton County right now, actually, that work in the area, and in the field, the broader field, we got a hell of a deal for that, for those two.
For both of them.
Yeah, so anybody that's putting in, information out there that, again, those people are worth their weight in gold because they know how these plans have to be written to meet the standards of the grants that we're trying to go after. So it's an investment, just like with rewriting the marijuana ordinances, of course, we incurred some legal fees from getting with our lawyers and professionally writing that ordinance. I'll also note that we are the only community I know of that only had a limit on the number of licenses that we issued and did not get sued. only had a limit on the number of licenses that we issued and did not get sued. So in the fifty thousand dollars we spent on legal fees, re, in the time we spent rewriting that ordinance, saved us three hundred, five hundred thousand dollars. The community is never gonna see that bill though. So it's an opportunity cost, which is harder to go on.
Well, and that non-motorized plan, uh, charge was, I think thirteen, thirteen thousand eight fifty. That's for five years.
That's nothing.
Yeah, I know. I mean, that's for five years. Stop and think about that. That's less than forty thousand dollars a year.
Sorry, I know we got a little off topic.
Yeah, it's okay. I mean, these are important things.
It's brainstorming, you know, hopefully.
It would be good if we could convince the board to, to meet with us, with the superintendent and to talk about these things. I think it's really important.
How would you, just so my feedback to.
A joint meeting. I mean, we've, we used to have joint meetings, I mean, occasionally, right? Uh, we haven't had one probably in, I don't know, five, six years or something, but we used to have joint meetings with the board.
Well, what about, what about the, the possibility of the planning commission doing a little more official planning in regards to projects or things that aren't being?
Those things are gonna fall on our staff.
Exactly. But I'm saying.
They're already behind.
I, no, no, no. I'm, I'm saying that we shouldn't all just funnel down to him. Maybe we should.
Write grants?
Have us, yeah, whatever, you know? What if, what if we, I mean, let's say, why not?
If people can, no, I, I, there's nothing now prevent, preventing people from doing that.
Put that task on us, you know? Find a contractor that can lay gravel or something.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. If we wanna, if we wanna do that, there's nothing stopping us now from doing that, right?
I guess what I'm saying is, should we offer ourselves out for that?
I actually think too, that reaching out to the very talented people that we have living in the township, but, but in a, in a very direct way, saying that this is what we wanna do. Do we wanna develop an ad hoc citizen committee to move this forward, right? I bet you we'd get some, some help. We don't ever do that.
Yeah.
Right? We, we wait for them to come together, uh, to, to do something like, like you did, right? But if we say that we have a goal here, we don't have the bandwidth to do it, would anyone like to volunteer to get us kickstarted on that? Maybe we'll get some, some interest.
And you know, the, the, the crux here seems to be, and I've, I've, I've approached Karen about this before. She absolutely, and, and the, the board also, does not want a person such as myself making decisions on behalf of the township. And I don't have a problem with that, with that parameter, you know? When it comes to the point of making the decision, yea or nay, you go to the power. But all of that minutia, you know, that research that, you know, that could be done by a person such as myself. And I'm not saying me, but I'm just saying, there's a lot of professionals out there that would do it pro bono.
Right. But you gotta ask, I think.
Yep.
Yeah, it could be, it's gotta just be done in coordination, you know, cause you, we don't want anyone living in existing silos. And just for example, some citizens in the community doing great things. I mean, obviously, um, with the Bath Township, uh, Cousins Park project where they're looking to establish a museum, that's a group of citizens.
I'm on that committee.
Yeah. And that's fantastic work they're doing.
Yeah. But I think it's, you know, we've talked a lot about just better participation in governance, right? In the township. And this is just another example of what might be the upside to that.
Great idea.
If we could figure out better ways to get people involved, people might get excited about a few projects and volunteer and devote some time to it.
Become a part.
Yeah, for sure.
I think that's a challenge. We've always had a hard prime getting public involved in things we've done. But some of the things that are happening at the board right now, they're getting half a dozen people really negative about things. We need to get twenty people that are really positive about things and have them counteract the negative stuff that's going on. Yeah. How we do that, I don't know, but that's kind of our challenge, I think.
Can I ask one last question to Miles? Um, Miles, do you regularly report to Karen and?
I talk to Karen every.
No, no, no. I mean, to recite like the, the, the concerns that we brought up here at planning commission meetings and stuff. Is that a regular thing?
Yeah, usually after a planning commission meeting, Karen will call me and say, hey, how'd the meeting go? Um, what were some of the highlights of the meeting? What were people, you know? Yeah, she, and I, to my knowledge, she does that with all the committees and commissions. She can't be at everything, but she likes to be involved in what's going on.
I'm sure she's watching right now.
Well, we're not live right now.
Oh, we're not. Oh, well, maybe she'll see it sometime.
Yeah, no.
All right. We should get back to task.
Sorry.
No, it's all right.
Thanks for letting us talk.
But any, any other comments on the CIP launch and application?
The, the only comment I got is just what Miles gave us in our packet is so far better than anything we had in the past. I really appreciate that because it's, it's let, leaves out steps. I had some comments on it, but I think, you know, that's a really good document to get us going.
You know, I'll take your comments and we will make some adjustments for the long post on the website and put it out to the public.
I really appreciate that. To me, it was a really, really good step in the right direction.
Okay. So I think it looks like we can move on. So the second item is just the non-motorized plan sidewalk inventory discussion. So we've got maps in our packet.
Well, I hope you guys all appreciate the mapping work that Heather, Joey and myself, we've been in GIS mode for like the last week and a half, two weeks. Um, this is data that was not publicly available in most places we could find. Um, so I'll quickly go over kind of the scope of what we're doing. Uh, obviously these are all the sidewalks within the township. Since this map was created, um, we've also now pretty much finished up the trails map. Uh, current trails and where trailheads are located. And today me and Joey were working on the paved shoulders map. So that will show everywhere where there is at least a three foot or wider paved shoulder that's marked in the township. And, um, me and Heather drove around and confirmed some of this on the ground. Cause there's some, you know, certain areas that are rapidly building out. Um, the cottages and Hock Hall will be one of them where as it's building out, they're building the sidewalks. So we tried to make sure what we're putting is accurate to what's on the ground. Me and Joey went out today and we measured, um, the lengths of those paved shoulders, which aren't too many in the township. So it took us about an hour. Um, kind of another interesting thing about this map is I know it looks kind of simple and probably like it didn't take us a long time. But it actually took us like several days to do, um, because this map is actually drawn in twenty-foot segments. Uh, which leads me into why we did that and then add some help I have to ask you guys for. So the reason we put these in twenty-foot segments is because right now they're divided into their various layers. So this is the safe routes to school project, essentially what the green layer is. And the orange layer is sitting on top of that. So some of this that's orange will get red, or, uh, purple will get redone by what is green. Um, the orange is the subdivisions, the blue is apartments. The only reason to kind of specify the difference between subdivisions and apartments is that just shows like areas of density and shows areas that could be advantageous to connect. Um, going back to how this was drawn, everything was drawn in twenty-foot segments. And what that allows us to do on the backend is if you're actually in ArcGIS and you open up what's called the attribute table, which kind of shows some of the metadata behind these layers, uh, it gives you an Excel spreadsheet of the layer itself. And it'll give you a, a line item for each twenty-foot segment. Now what we're hoping to do is now that we've conducted an inventory, we'd like to score these based upon their condition. So, uh, tomorrow me and Joey will be working on a rating system of good, fair, poor. We're trying to keep it fairly simple. And we'll objectively say like, hey, here's what a good sidewalk looks like. Here's what a poor sidewalk looks like. Um, then we are hoping that either some of you or some of, uh, the rec committee or anybody you know in the community that would like to be a part of this, we're gonna set a time and a day where we'll have people come in real quick in the, uh, board room. We'll go over what's a good sidewalk, what's a fair sidewalk, you know, what's poor, fifteen, twenty-minute, um, presentation. We'll give everyone their little areas that we want you to go check. We'll give you a map that we want you to mark up of where, you know, where it's good, what's fair, what's poor. We'll have everyone come back and turn in their maps to us all marked up. And then we will digitize that information into a layer and score it. And then, um, that information will be given to the Williams and Works folks. So right now our goal for the current sidewalk inventory, trails and paved shoulders is by the end of this month, we will zip up all those files and give them to Williams and Works so they can start working with them and putting them in their plan. By mid next month, we will give them the scored layer for all sidewalks. So a lot of things kind of happening. We're trying to move quickly so we can give Williams and Work folks all the data on the front end so they can use it to write their plan. Um, but what I also wanted to get from you guys tonight, to be able to get feedback from them is, I don't necessarily need an answer right now, but I want you guys to just look at the map, kind of look at where sidewalk networks are now. I know we've talked a lot about building connectivity. And maybe I have one that's, I don't. And we've talked about building connectivity on the north side of the lake. We have some sidewalks here. We have some here and we have our parks here. I think the lowest hanging fruit that, you know, me and Ben have talked about quite a bit is connecting the beachfront via sidewalk to, uh,
Westwasser.
Yep, Westwasser Park here. Um, there's been some internal discussions. I've talked to some, I've talked to about three different developers all recently about this property here. Cause the, the property owner dropped the price of this about two hundred thousand dollars. So it got on a bunch of people's radar recently.
Is that right? Okay.
Uh, Dale Hosford owns this piece here and he's expressed interest in whoever buys this, he would like to partner and develop out whatever gets developed here. If that comes, one of the requests we're gonna make from the developers to carry the sidewalk network behind these homes here and then out here and then have a crossing. Because these houses, if you look at them, are so close to the right of way.
Yeah.
It'd be, it'd be difficult. We could establish an easement there, um, but it's just so wet. It almost makes more sense to go behind them.
Is that, there's some topography there then too, or no? Is it?
Yeah, it's actually quite wet there, but we think if we stick close to where these houses are, we'll be on dry ground. And it's just, uh, you know, some of these sidewalks, especially like this house here, we'd be building sidewalk like at the corner of their house. They walk out their front door and they'd be stepping onto the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Which is, we've ran into similar issues with the safer house to school and some of the downtown areas. But that's just the type of things I guess I'm trying to ask you guys to think about. Look at this network. Maybe have a quick discussion tonight or, uh, give us an email or some feedback. Mark this map up and say, hey, these are areas we'd like to prioritize. So I can send all that to Williams and Works. So any initial thoughts though about the sidewalks in the township? Areas of connectivity?
Have you had any discussion at all about, um, sidewalks south of Westwasser on Park Lake?
Yeah, moving south on.
Yeah, there's, there's quite an easement on the east side of the road. Um, like we'll say from Miller's Store, uh, south to wherever, Jackson Court or even State Road.
Yeah, I guess we haven't because right now there's just such, we see it as such a priority to link those, I don't know what's going on there. Um, to link those two, uh, areas I was talking about, just because it's so highly used.
Highly traveled, very much so.
We were driving it today and there were some people walking on the street and you know, you're around that bend too. It's, it sucks.
No room.
So that's kind of been our main area of conversation and focus just internally, to be honest with you.
So you've, you've, uh, included all sidewalks there. So you have suburban, or you have, uh?
Yeah, subdivisions is what we're calling.
So, so do we know for some of those? I mean, so the maintenance agreements for some of those sidewalks are probably not the same, I guess is what I'm saying, right? I mean, e- especially if there's any sidewalks along private roads, which I'm not sure there are.
There are, there are a couple.
Oak Island, don't they have private sidewalks all over in there, don't they?
So I mean, I guess those would be outside the scoring, obviously then, right? I mean, cause we're not investing public dollars and.
The only ones that we saw that were, cause Oak Island, that's true. We didn't even, uh, draw those though, cause they're actually thick curbs. We actually didn't even consider them sidewalks, um, as defined by, uh, the road commission. But like inside Hock Hall, some of these roads, like this one right here is still a private road. So, um, Ray, forgive me, I don't know what this HOA is called here.
Well, yeah, that was, well, the one you just noticed is senior court. Senior court's a public road.
I think on, on my map I had it as private, but I'm not sure, cause it is confusing there. But I, I guess our assumption is we're still gonna score because a- after this neighborhood's built out, the intention is to release these to the road commission. So by the time it's.
Cause they are built to county standards.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I know the, the cottages, which is further south on your map there, that part, the Hock Hall Drive east, that's private right now. But I know that homeowners association has been working for a year or more to try to get that public.
Okay. And that assumption was it would go public. So we were still gonna score them.
Yeah.
Now the maintenance either way, public or private for those sections of sidewalk is the homeowner.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah. To Ryan's point, um, I think you've discussed, and we were gonna put this as, uh, possible item of action within the non-motorized plan is to, you know, use some funding, uh, to create a clean slate program. Where the township identifies the problematic sidewalks. We go in, we do a one-time fix and we send out some notices and publications saying, hey, we have now brought all sidewalks up to, you know, twenty twenty-three road commission standards. From here forth, the township will be strictly enforcing the maintenance of said sidewalks.
That's a good.
Yeah.
Yep.
So that was already one good feedback point of the sidewalk network that we got.
And then we can take a look at, cause somebody brought this up, I guess I did, is, um, the ma- when you go to maintenance of public sidewalks like that, it's a lot less expensive if you can hire a contractor to do the maintenance on the one project rather than have each individual homeowner do their own thing.
Oh, yeah. That, it would be catastrophic, it seems.
Now, the way Meridian does it is they, they set theirs up with a contract like that every year. And the sidewalks are marked as which one is gonna get replaced. If a homeowner wants to do it himself, they're allowed to do it. They don't have to have it done with a contractor. So somebody likes pouring concrete themselves, they can just do it.
Doesn't, doesn't have to conform to certain.
Oh, yeah. It's, yeah.
It's gotta be two inches thick. It's gotta be, you know, level.
Oh, it's gotta, it's gotta be at least four inches thick.
Four inches.
Oh, yeah. Sidewalks are four inches thick.
Yeah.
So your analysis, Miles, I mean, it, it's gonna pick up sidewalks that are in bore shape. It's gonna pick up likely gaps where there are obviously, obviously gaps. It's not gonna pick up areas that there should be sidewalks, but there are not.
That is the feedback we're looking for from you guys. As the professionals of, you know, if you're professional feedback.
And I don't even know there'd be an appetite, but I, you know, I know my own neighborhood and I know that there are a gazillion kids that basically play in the street. We have no sidewalks in my, uh, my little suburb.
Is that, is that the pines?
The pines, yeah.
Okay. You don't have sidewalks back there?
What?
There are no sidewalks?
Zero sidewalks.
Interesting.
No sidewalks. And there's so many kids.
Yeah. That's it. That's some feedback that we're looking for.
And it's just crazy to me that, you know, we were better about this now, but the fact that we didn't make them put sidewalks in a place like that, right? And the density has just increased.
I guess that.
Was that?
It's they'll be playing in the streets.
Uh, they'd be playing some things in the streets, right?
I did that forever when I was growing up.
Yeah, but hopefully when they're meeting up with their friends that you walk on the sidewalk.
Play in the streets, but you know, you have to bike, you have to walk, you have, everything is in the street, right? Your dog, everything.
It's a different day now.
So, I mean, that would be, uh, we probably just don't have the budget to do it. Maybe it, it should be a priority maybe to fix existing sidewalks and fill in the obvious low hanging fruit, right?
Yeah.
But there, I think there's a lot of places that if you looked at it, would say these places should get sidewalks.
Well, and I think John, um, talked about last meeting creating, you know, and maybe your neighborhood will be a good candidate for this. And if there's an HOA, that'd be something to, you know, talk to the HOA about those establishing.
Not just one, we got four.
A sidewalk district, you know?
Yeah, right.
And then saying, hey, we are planning a sidewalk district. The township at scale is gonna be doing this. So we're able to bring down the price point of this. But, uh, you know, we'd like you guys to take a vote and feel how valuable this is to your community. That could, those could all be actionable steps in this non-motorized plan.
It'd be nice to see this when it overlays over the trail also.
Yeah, we, and I know Heather, we met with Ben and, um, quite a bit of trail, mileage of trails in the township just between Bengal Wildlife and Rose Lake. I mean, there are, we got a lot of trails.
Bengal's private though.
Is there? Their, their trails are open to the public.
Ah, so just to briefly get back to the, just the point, so when you say that this could be part of a plan, right? How does a place, and I'm just using mine because I know it, right? But how does a place, how does it, how does it show up in a plan? Right? Uh, sidewalk improvements, right? How do you rank it or prioritize it or, you know, do whatever you need to do to put it on the radar that it's in a plan? And the plan might only be like you suggest is that let's propose to the HOAs in that place that they develop this sort of sidewalk district. And, and ask them to, for their feedback, do they want a sidewalk? That could be the plan.
What we probably would like to do for this, uh, and we've workshopped this a little bit internally. Um, Williams and Works won't be a part of this meeting just because we don't have them built for that. But what we've kind of talked about is having some kind of open house when these maps get a little bit more flushed out. And we've got the survey available so we can get, make sure the survey is there for anybody that does happen to show up. But do a little bit of advertising and one planning commission meeting. And hopefully some people will show up. I know, uh, my experience with open houses is usually it's not that much. To everyone's point, we'd like to get people involved. Um, we're also gonna be taking this information to people with some of those pop-ups, but we'd have an open house. The maps will be on large prints on tables and we'll say. We'd have an open house. The maps will be on large prints, on tables, and we'll say. Where would you as a community member and or planning commission members like to see sidewalks? Staff will then take that information and map it. So we would map out a sub-proposed future sidewalk in your neighborhood, right? And then in the actionable items of the plan, we'll talk about, hey, a neighborhood C as dictated on this map. Uh, there is a proposed section of sidewalk. Here are some actual steps where the community could take to uh, bring that thought to fruition. That's kind of our thought right now.
Could that include non-motorized trails as well?
Yeah, non-motorized trails will of course be a part of this.
There was one of those at one time. It was a tri-county non-motorized trail proposal. Um, and I attended those meetings, but uh, I mean, and that went all the way over to Chandler Crossing. Across the sod farms. So I, there are areas, you know, that could, you know, people could bike across there.
Yeah, and I know even, even prior, a while back, I mean, there was a whole rail-sta-trails push in that township and then the.
Well, that's all private now.
Yep, all went private, yeah. Cause there's, again, what some people would see as a really positive proj- project. And what I, of course, as a planner would say, this is great. We need to ma- move heaven and earth to make this happen. There was significant community pushback against it.
Oh, sorry, George.
Yeah, can, can some of these sidewalks be like asphalt?
Yeah, so uh, you can do like what's called an improved sidewalk where you'll see those sometimes with an asphalt sidewalk that's above six feet. Um, usually when I see those, you know, as a planner, it indicates to me that that's a sidewalk that's also bikable. And sometimes they'll mark that and they'll have, you know, they'll even put a white line down. They'll say like this, you know, three feet is for bikes. And then this four foot segments for walking.
Or if something like that could work south of, south of the Wiswasser.
Yeah, yeah, very much so. I've seen, you know, I took some pictures of, of pathways in Florida like that. And their pathways are these very exclusive neighborhoods, but they're, they're bad.
They're big wide too, aren't they? They're wide?
No, they were, they were three feet wide. I measured them. And they were, I mean, me walking down, you know, you wouldn't have, you'd have to step off to have somebody pass you. I couldn't understand why they would even, uh, other than to keep. You know, one-way traffic from getting their feet wet.
And three feet to me feels like walking. And maybe they did that because they wanted to incentivize walking and not biking.
That's possible, you know. I would see four feet as an absolute minimum and six feet is.
Four foot is the absolute minimum for biking.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so that, that, just wanted to let you guys know, this is in the works. This is what we're doing. We've been spending a lot of time on it. And um, wanted to, what, again, if you look at these maps, you see low hanging fruit for connectability. Obviously, a, a good point of connection that was thought about for the safer routes to school, just to show you, you know. What I mean by low hanging fruit for connectability is we have sidewalks that currently on Main Street, we're ending about here. And then we're ending about here on this end. And then we have this giant sidewalk network right here where this whole cul-de-sac had sidewalks.
And they go nowhere.
Just had a couple hundred foot gap we had to span to connect those two large networks. And so that's kind of, you know, the low hanging fruit for connectability we're talking about.
Is that the one on Slate Road that they had to, they have to make a little bridge or something over a swampy area?
No, we, we, that was looked at because it does get up, you can see it's a little bit tight here. This is kind of the uh, area. But we're just, they're doing a little bit engineering here to shore this up.
I just, I remember Jason telling us about that at one of the township board meetings.
On this side, there might be like a one-foot retaining wall. That might have to be installed.
I forgot, was it, were they doing both sides of the road there?
They are, both sides, yeah, so um.
I just couldn't remember. Hi, thank you.
This is by no means like geo-located or anything like that, but yeah. This side will be coming down and hooking in there. There'll be a small cross across there and the northern side will kind of just dead end.
Pending further expansion or something.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's good. I mean, the sidewalks always gotta end somewhere, you know?
Well, I see a lot of that in Hawk Hollow. There's sidewalks that stop.
There's one, I just noticed another gap that, I think it's on a golf course property.
Yeah, it is.
We were looking at some low hanging fruit in Hawk Hollow just to get you to think about other things besides sidewalks too. There is a paved shoulder that is actually quite wide down this whole avenue. You can see it there. Okay, you can see it here. This is about five feet wide, right? So it's more than bikable. Not, not signed for bikes either.
People use that a lot.
But it would meet the standards for biking. Then you turn on to this road. And there's no marks at all. No white, no white striping at all. And that's an area where some low, that's low hanging fruit. And that road is definitely wide enough to handle two ways of traffic and two ways of biking.
It's like a four-lane road, that, that pavement right there. Is that going to be the one, George, that is destined for repaving?
This is a grand new.
Yeah, it's past there.
One of them's gonna be ground and repaved or something.
Beyond there.
Up there, yeah.
Yeah, thanks for all this work, Miles.
I do, I do have a question though. Uh, you've got public and you've got subdivision sidewalks. What's the difference?
So subdivisions are public. We just, for, in terms of public, I guess a more accurate way to say is like. Sidewalk adjacent to a main corridor and then subdivisions. Because obviously the subdivision sidewalks, most of them fall within the road right of way. They're still public sidewalks. It just happens to be located in subdivision.
Now, as far as maintenance is concerned, when, when the township starts enforcing the maintenance thing, on the sections that are on main highways. Who's gonna, who maintains that? Would that be the township or the county?
Like done by Saginaw?
Yeah, so it's, it's a little bit mixed. So like right now, let's just use Webster Road. It's my understanding. That the township maintains like this section of sidewalk through here that's across from us. And then once you get to here, there was a homeowner there and always has been, so like they're responsible for that section. These people are responsible for that section. But there's obviously, when you get up here along, you know, some of the schools, the township and or school will maintain those sections. So it's a little bit of a patchwork. But if you have a single-family home and there's sidewalk going across your front yard, the chances are that's your sidewalk.
Yeah, I think, I don't know if, how well that works in other places that have this, right? I mean. This is a good idea and I think, you know, we all think it's a good idea, but I think it could end really poorly.
So in my, in my hometown, um, and I'm just gonna talk about that, cause that's where I know. And same rule, you're responsible for the sidewalk in front of your property. And during my childhood, I got, you know, my younger days, it was not enforced. And by the time I was probably into high school. They started enforcing it, cause as the time, when that community was in a very similar time to where Bath is now. But things were changing and professionalizing and, um, I don't even think they did a clean slate, um, program. They just, one day turned on the switch and they're like, hey, that sidewalk, it's gotta be done. And people were pissed. And politicians got some blowback.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what does the board think of this plan? Does the board know about this plan yet?
No, there is, it's not a plan yet. I mean, it's something that.
Yeah, I know, I know, but, yeah. I mean, so when you say they enforced it, that means that they repaired the sidewalk and sent them the bill.
You, you got a letter in the mail giving you some options.
Yes, yeah.
And you had a date where you had to fulfill those options.
Well, I can tell you how the Meridian Township, they have this plan in place. It's been in place for years.
And do they enforce it?
Oh yeah. They've, they've split the township into seven different areas. And they do one area every year.
Oh, I see, okay.
And they've got a person that goes out and they actually take a can of orange paint out and they mark all the sections of sidewalks that have to be replaced. And then they put out a contract.
For a contractor?
For a co- yeah, contracted, to contract all those repairs. And then they send the notices out to all the people that. I'm not sure what, what the process is, but um. The public gets, you notice that these sections of sidewalk on your property have to be repaired. And you've got a choice. You can do it yourself. You can have the contractor do it. And this is what it's gonna cost you. If the cost for a property owner is above a certain amount, they can put on a five-year payment plan. So it's not gonna, it's not, it's gonna cost them five thousand dollars a year because their side of the property is so bad.
In my hometown too, like they religiously enforce that. Still to the day. Now, no one balks at it now, because it's been a trend now for ten plus years. But it's that period of change. I, you never had anything enforced. But honestly, we kind of even get that now. With now that staff is professionalizing and we're going out, we're like, hey, sir, actually your shed, it's in the right of way. I didn't know if you know this. We can't shed in the front yard. The number one statement that I get back is, my shed's always been my front yard. Who are you? Yeah, that's always.
May I ask a segue question?
Segue to what?
Crosswalk, just sidewalks.
It's a loop question.
Crosswalk ordinance, where, where does that stand? I just, Jason had mentioned it in the safer routes to school, that, that needed to be done in the township and we don't have anything.
A what?
That we need one.
A crosswalk ordinance. Where traffic has to stop in a marked crosswalk or?
I would, I guess I would say that, that most of our sidewalks and or crosswalks of that nature are in. Clean County Road Commission. If, if there is a standard for crosswalks, I would look to the road commission for that standard. And when we were designing some of the crosswalks for this uh, safer routes to school project. We were going off of their standards. I know they have some.
The reason I ask is cause there was.
I think he was talking about in Park Lake, wasn't he? If you made that connection.
It was at the beach and it was at Wiswasser and things of that nature.
From Wiswasser to the other side.
Yeah, but even crossing there, we're going across their road right of way.
Right, so they can still have the standard.
So would that be something that the township should speak with the road commission to get those sanctioned or what?
They, they've already been talked, they're, they've, Mark was working on that.
That's why Mark left, right?
I, I could follow up on that and get back to you at the next meeting.
I would think a crosswalk thing like that should, should almost be a, a state law or something.
Well, it seems like it, but.
Because, because, you know, to, you're driving from this township to the next township, this township's got requirements, the next one doesn't. How do you know when to?
True.
When you have to stop. How do the police enforce it? It, it's, it's gonna be tough.
Maybe there's a state standard ordinance that would.
All right, and we're getting off topic here a little bit. All right, so let's uh, go back to the non-motorized plan. Any, any additional comments that we wanna make? Staff, Miles?
I assume as you get this map, finally, you'll start just adding the street names.
Yeah, yeah, we could.
Cause when, when I started looking.
Now, we just were trying to call out where the sidewalks were.
When I see the, the big map, I can tell where I am. But when I see the, the maps, we've done just the small sections, I don't know. Some of I know and some of I don't.
Right, and, and fetch, that is a, a fil- a layer you can use as the street names. Yep, you just turn that layer on.
We could, we could have turned on here and we just did it.
You just label it too, maybe.
But that's good feedback for when we have those listening sessions or open houses.
I, I did have one of the questions, the apartment sidewalks. I assume the apartment complex is responsible for maintaining those sidewalks?
That is true.
Okay.
That is true.
Okay, all right, thanks, Miles. Uh, next item is the report from planner.
Yeah, um, so I just wanted to talk about upcoming events and projects, um. So we have a little bit of an opportunity here and I wanted to get some feedback from a planning commission. So obviously, we've been talking a lot about the non-motorized plan tonight, um. We talked previously when the folks from Williams and Works were here about trying to do as much as we can. In concert with the recreation committee and bring these two plans basically to market together. And where there was opportunities to collab, we should seize upon those opportunities. So I think we have one of those. Um, here now, so basically, we wanna do those two pop-up events. We were thinking about doing the June twenty-first summer solstice event that the township hosts and doing a pop-up event there. And then doing a pop-up event at uh, July farmer's market. Um, because those would give it, those are the timelines we kind of need and the separation we need in time to meet the DNR's requirements. So these are the types of things we're thinking about. Um, if we would like to make that June twenty-first event, we need the survey. Uh, done by mid to in May. And to get that survey done, we need to get some feedback from this body and the recreation committee of in early May. So the Williams and Works folks have a draft survey kind of in the works right now. They'd like to bring that survey to you guys and the rec committee. Um, when I talked to them and Taylor and Karen today, we, they were saying, you know. They could give me the survey, I bring it to you guys, you guys give me the feedback, I give it back to them, they could give it to Taylor. And then they could join her because of her budget for that at the rec committee and then get feedback from them and then put everything together. But what we kind of came up with and wanna get your thoughts on is, hey, they need feedback from you, they need it from the rec committee. Uh, how, maybe we could possibly cancel our planning commission meeting on the ninth? Cause that was the day they can't, Williams and Works, the ninth doesn't work for them, but the eighth does. That's the day prior and there will be a rec committee that day. So it's gonna see if we could entertain the idea of canceling our meeting on the ninth, joining the rec committee on the eighth. Williams and Work folks will be there. They will present the draft survey that covers both of these plans. And then we can, uh, or you guys can give them feedback straight from the horse's mouth.
You're talking May, May eighth?
May eighth.
What do you say?
What do you think, sir?
Yeah, I mean, I support the idea.
Should we make a motion?
Again, I don't think we need it actually, but if we can, sure.
You can make that proclamation then, just.
I think I can, actually, but I don't know. If you feel better about it, uh, more inclusive, that's fine too.
Doesn't matter.
So we're proposing to cancel the Tuesday meeting and then join the uh, join the other committee on the Monday.
We're just moving our meeting to the.
I can make, well, I can make a motion, but, yeah, sure.
We'd be joining their meeting.
I, I moved to make a motion. I moved that to we uh, cancel our meeting on May ninth and move it to the eighth and uh, join their meeting as recommended.
And just, we, we wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a planning commission meeting. So we're not moving our meeting.
So we're canceling. I moved to cancel our meeting on the ninth.
And then we would, yeah, exactly.
And for people to uh.
All we need to do is cancel our meeting on the ninth and then we can do anything we want. Just happen to show up together on a Monday at that other meeting.
Okay.
I guess that, that brings a question though. We have.
We will, we will notice it uh, as a special meeting of the two bodies, cause we will have more than a quarter. We need eighteen hours of notice for that.
Oh, so then maybe we do need that mu- better motion. But it's not a planning commission meeting, but it is a joint meeting, okay.
It'll be a joint meeting.
Be joining their meeting as a.
Keep changing the parameters, George, sorry.
I moved that we cancel our. May ninth. Planning commission meeting for the joint meeting.
On May.
On May eighth. And I'm hoping to get a second.
I'll second that.
Yeah, support. Uh, any further discussion?
Is that at six? Is that what time they meet on Monday?
I believe six.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose the same sign? All right, motion carries.
Let me check that time on the calendar real quick. Just so we're all on the same page, including me.
Nice desk, Miles. Is that yours?
Yeah, that's how organized I always.
Nice latte there and everything.
That's how we do it here in Bath.
Do you drink all your coffee with cinnamon syrup?
Oh, definitely.
Anything else, Miles?
That is it.
Okay. Uh, public comment? Please come to the podium. We, we request that of everyone. I'm not picking on you. What's that? Yeah, and we do need your name.
My name's Sam Heatherington.
Okay, and just address too. Where you live.
I actually live in Hazlet.
Okay, that, that's okay, yep.
So I'm a Michigan State student doing a uh, report on local policy and uh, public facilitation. So my uh, my primary planning commission meetings I attended, so the report is primarily on Wheatfield Township's wind turbines. And the opposition to that. So I attended multiple meetings uh, over there and that's down in Williamson, if you guys know the area.
Wheat, Wheatfield?
Yeah, Wheatfield Township. And uh, I, I came across a, there was a lot of opposition to that uh, that project. So there was a lot of people making pretty heated public comments. So I would say that's one thing you guys have going for you. You don't have uh, quite the anger at you as some of these, some of these public comments.
Occasionally we do, but rarely, rarely, yeah.
Yeah, and uh, it also seems like you guys have very, like, put together, much more organized and put together space for the meetings.
That's our guy right there.
Yeah, this place is amazing. I love your tapestry.
That's pretty cool.
That's amazing.
It's like from the fifties.
And uh, yeah, so I just, just take in some of the comments you guys were making. And it seems like the budget is a big concern and maybe staffing.
Yeah, we're a small township, right? We wanna, we wanna do a lot of things. We don't have the capacity sometimes, yeah. Either with budget or people, yeah.
Yeah, but uh, overall, it seems like you guys are really well-together and organized compared to Wheatfield. I feel there's a lot of, a lot of problems with their planning commission meetings, but.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks for the feedback.
Enjoyable.
Okay, good. Thanks for coming. Okay, uh, then we can go to Ryan, if you got a report for us.
Uh, I do. I was trying desperately to print you out some things, um, someone's office in the. Uh, I do, I was trying desperately to print you out some things, um, someone's office in the township has several printouts that I, I meant to give to you. I will email them to you later tonight, every time I try to print, it goes somewhere else in the building. Uh, there is a treasures quarterly report, um, that, you know, every quarter the treasure gives us an update on the investments. That is one of the things I'll share with you, just so you can see, you know, how much, speaking of how much money, you know, we have saved up, that'll uh help illustrate that. Uh, the answer is still a healthy amount. We received a report last week from the Safe Routes to Schools uh group, uh, just an update where they're at. We also received a report from the uh Park Lake Advisory Board. If you've never seen the annual report that they produce, uh, I will include that in my email as well. It's, um, you know, it's a bunch of scientists on that group, uh, for the most part, they know what they're doing, uh, speaking of volunteers doing professional level work, I think this is a real great example of that. You know, if you want to know about weeds and fish and birds and turbidity and all that stuff, it's in this report, it's worth a, a look see. They put so much time and effort into it, I hope more people will read it, so I'll send that to you as well. Interestingly, we heard from the Clinton County Broadband Initiative, uh, in a, you know, in my opinion, underwhelming presentation, uh, that was sort of like, hey, uh, the broadband grant in Clinton County does include Bath Township. Uh, to the surprise of I think everybody else in the room. Uh, unfortunately, the gentleman had not provided his PowerPoint to us beforehand, so we couldn't put it up on screen and we couldn't find it on the county uh map, uh, or the county website that he pointed us to, so we didn't, we weren't able to see that, but he, he is claiming that there are township households served.
Still haven't been provided that.
What'd you say?
I, I still haven't been provided, he said Paul Walken provided us something.
Yeah, so like with no evidence, not that I'm saying he's lying, I don't believe that at all, but we have not, everything we have seen says no Bath Township uh homes. Uh, so we're still trying to crack that nut, um. I saw a little bit of what Jason had been sharing with us and with the board about how this went down, you know, as I sort of poked at him saying like, wait a minute, that's not what we were told and when did this happen, and it was like, oh, you know, there was a meeting after the meeting with other people who decided this and we didn't have time to get the other people together, it was real hard to trace like who's actually making decisions here. And then when I asked, you know, in the grant application, did you include the Bath Township money, since you're now saying you'll serve Bath Township Homes? And the response was like, no, we didn't include any of the township money in the grant, we just said that the townships were supportive. The whole point that they came to us and the other townships was to be able to say, we've leveraged this much support and money from the townships to this grant proposal. So I, everything he said, I was like, what, huh, really? So again, I, I'm not saying none of it was true, it just was all new news to us and not how we understood it to be and, you know, as I said, why aren't we getting regular information from you about this, it was like, ooh, is that my job, it's the, you know, county's job. So I said like, who, well, maybe your county commissioner could co, and again, it was just like, who's got the information, who's making the decisions? How can we stay plugged in? So I asked at the end of the meeting for uh the superintendent to have some regular updates from the county administrator. It seems like that's where the buck stops and that he should know what's happening, so she's agreed to make some connections there. So hopefully we'll see some evidence of Bath Township Homes being served because that would be a win. Uh, hopefully they do use our money in the grant because that there are Bath Township residents being served and hopefully we'll have some regular updates. Jason, our, our appointed committee member, uh, and former Planning Commission and Board Member was in the audience and it seemed like this was all news to him as well, so uh, you know, sort of good news, but frustrating how the communication has been and we have no evidence of it, so I'm not holding my breath yet, but I'm hoping his understanding of the situation that he presented to us uh turns out to be the right one. I will keep you updated as we get information about that. One of the other things I'll share with you by email is a weird sort of Board of Water and Light property transfer of interest requests. Apparently, uh, back in the day, we as a township had made some promises to Board of Water and Light that we would transfer some property interests to them and then never did and as they sort of did their own sort of auditing of their records, they found that we never did that, so they're now asking us to do that. So there's a memo in the board packet I'll send to all of you about uh, about that situation.
Twenty years old.
Yeah, real old, real old. We did the second reading of the zoning ordinance thirty one point eighty three, so that passed, uh, so that will move, what is it, thirty days past uh last week into practice. We did talk about strategic planning uh at the board meeting and I thought the superintendent um very strategically said, listen, I'm gonna get all of the departments to put their plans together and put it in one place and then I'm gonna give it to you. And she sort of said this in different ways and, you know, the supervisor sort of was asking questions like, why and who and what? And finally, I said to Marie, the supervisor, I think what Karen is trying to say is like, she's gonna give us information to try to force us to respond to it. Because right now, the, the township departments are sort of operating with, you know, what they think is best and, and I give them a lot of kudos for that and I support them in that, but to the point that they're getting not very much leadership or guidance from us, I think at the very least we'll have something to respond to, and this board seems very responsive, not very proactive. So if at the very least, I think what Karen will provide is however many departments we have, the ten departments, you know, work plans like we have created for Miles in partnership with him, to say like, here's what the year looks like, does the board have thoughts on that? Does the board want to do more, does the board want to do different things? Hopefully, we don't take that opportunity to derail what the staff have, you know, in the works, I think that is a risk of this, but I, I do think it is a way to sort of poke it us to say like, is this what you want? Here's your chance to, to do more or do different, uh, so I'll keep you updated on that as well. We got a proposal from the attorney to attend all of our board meetings to help us facilitate, not facilitate the meeting to be clear, but facilitate conversations, processes, you know, if you've been to one of our board meetings lately or you've watched it, you know, we get bogged down in, can you make this motion and who can do this and who has the right to do that, just like a lot of time and energy is spent on process and procedure and there isn't a lot of trust at the board level that what I say is right or what you say is right. So even when we sort of say like, I know how it's done, other people are like, you're wrong, and so we just spend time talking about that. It's just very inefficient and I can feel the public frustration at that when they come for business and they come and they want information and they want things to happen, instead, you know, our board meetings are almost all three hours right now. Uh, oftentimes, we don't get through the full agenda, which means business is left on the table, it's just not very efficient and effective. The proposal uh calls for, it's just over fourteen thousand dollars for an annual con, uh, contract to have a attorney here. I'll be honest, I was expecting the number to be much higher than that, to have an attorney here every two weeks to help us through process as we see fit.
How much will it?
Just over fourteen thousand dollars.
For the year.
For the year, yeah.
Oh, wow.
So, you know, again, I, I'm not a rich person, fourteen thousand dollars is a lot of money to me, but I was expecting a much bigger nu, number, something that, you know, twenty-five, thirty, maybe even up to fifty thousand dollars, so when it came back, so uh, in my opinion, cheaply and where the attorney has been present in the last couple of months, things seem to move more efficiently. You know, to me, all signs show that this might be a good investment for us, at least in the time being. Maybe we do it for six months and we see how it's going and decide is it a good use of money, do we need folks, do we not need folks? I, I, I'll be voting yes for it if it comes before us, I think it's a good investment into the efficiency of, of the township. Uh, we also approved the superintendent to apply for an electronics recycling grant through Eagle, uh, so I believe she'll be doing that. Uh, and that was all the business that took uh place that day. I will also note that former supervisor Paula Clark passed away earlier that day last week, um, somewhat surprisingly, I think, and quickly. You know, she served the township for a, a long time and, you know, as I said at the board meeting, I didn't always agree with Paula, but I always knew she was trying to do more for the community, trying to do what she thought was right and frankly, leading and taking action uh in ways that we're not doing now, so I will miss her. And uh, for those of you who felt close to Paula, she has a memorial at uh eleven AM on May eighth at the MSU Union. So for any of you that want to attend that or anybody watching this meeting later, uh, I'm sure her family and friends would appreciate folks coming out. That's May eighth, eleven AM, MSU Union. It, it feels from the notice that it is not a funeral, it is more like a memorial celebration, but that's my interpretation, so I, if you show up and it's something else, please don't blame me.
Thanks, Ryan. Any comments or questions for Ryan? Okay, then, just uh second to last item here, any open comments from Planning Commissioners?
Just one, I think for me anyway, the reports we've been getting from you, Ryan, for the last few meetings, I think have been very good. I really appreciate that, I've read through some of the stuff in the board packet ahead of time, so some of the stuff I knew about ahead of time, but I really appreciate getting a complete reply like that.
Thank you. George?
I'd, I'd just like to review three on uh the stuff you guys put together for us tonight. This was put together very nice, I greatly appreciate the work done behind the scenes. You know, it's gotta take a lot of time and effort and greatly appreciate, greatly appreciate that. Miles, Miles and Miles teams. And all those that serve our community, especially Paula, I've sat with, next to her in several meetings, she, she, she's the one that put together the meeting of the chairs that had to, you know, where they'd all meet for all the chairs of all the committees would have one meeting and she did that on a regular basis, so she definitely tried to uh, you know, serve her community and uh, I, I appreciate her. I didn't agree with her a lot, but I, I do appreciate and as a person, I loved her.
Thank you, other comments? Okay, uh, is there a motion to adjourn? Going to Old School.
Oh, no. I'll second that.
Support, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we're adjourned, thanks everyone, thanks for coming.
They took the salary, made a move and.
As very informed, uh, like I feel like I learned a lot about different public policies that I wouldn't have heard in other Planning Commission meetings.
Well, that's great.
Feel free to come back.
This wasn't even one of our mo, our more substantive meetings, I think, so.
How big is Wheat, how big is Wheatfield Township?
Thanks for coming.
What's that? I was just wondering how big that Wheatfield Township is.
Yeah, it sounds like it's a, like a wind farm kind of thing, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Yeah, it's been pretty controversial.
I thought.
Because I can see where they'd be upset if you go to the, it's a good wind farm up there.
Oh, yeah, the.
Yeah, the chair.
I know, they have the same problem too, is that you don't know when you actually arrive in.